Okay, this time I'd like to call the work session of June the 18th to order. Roll call please.
Gonzalez here. Brenneman?
Here.
Haley? Wakes?
Here.
Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Like to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
This rose, so moved to approve to its evening's agenda.
Stevie second.
Okay, we moved in second. Roll call please.
Roll call Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brenneman?
Hi.
Wakes?
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry?
Hi.
Parker?
Hi.
That motion carries.
Okay, board updates. Anybody have any? Any updates for us?
When we don't have such a big packed work session, I'd be glad to share some things that came away with from the convention. We leave some time into that.
Maybe if we have, if we have some time at the end.
That would work.
If we have ten or, you know, if we can do this and have time at the end.
Be glad to.
You know, somebody did ask me, I think, two weeks ago at our meeting about the the task force regarding the bill separations. And that meeting never occurred. So I just updating that.
I never heard back from the mayor either on our meet, on our joint meeting.
Interesting, because I actually had a commissioner I, that I saw over the weekend who thought we had a date scheduled. So.
It was followed, followed up, I think, with the bill we've already divertation, but that entail, I think it was decided that, that there were some other things they were looking at and determining whether or not that would be a, be a, be a like logical thing for us to do. We're going to discuss that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can speculate about what's going on, but I certainly don't have firsthand information other than they're working their way through their budget process. And I have no visibility into what they're putting in their budget. Or haven't been in certainly any meetings to speak to anybody specifically about, about what they're doing.
Well, I'm glad I raised my hand again, to be honest.
I do, I do know that they, the staff has met with the commissioners.
I'm going, I think.
On going. So I'm not sure what those conversations were about.
You could do.
I don't have any, any updates for now.
And I, I can't shed any light on the task force. I don't, I just don't know.
Okay.
All right. Well, you saw emails I've sent out. Just trying to make the board aware of busy summer. And I was going to speak to some, and then we'll get to a regular session about some of the other things that still need to, need to get to. But not to delay this any further. But we do have Black and Beach here. I will let you introduce yourself, but the, the purpose of the meeting is to go over and have a beginning conversation with the board and the public, whoever's visiting on what our integrated resource plan efforts have been to date. And then speak about, speak to several scenarios and things that we need to have the board consider. At some point, we'll be asking you to weigh in on on what your thoughts are, provide input into this. We'll have to get this in front of the public, see public comments. Certainly open period for that. Then somewhere later this year, we'll be asking the board to consider everything that we've, all the information we've gathered, both from our partner in Black and Beach, things that staff has worked on, anything to come back from the public. And any, anything that you told us that you want to see. Try to wrap all that up together and then ask you to approve this integrated resource plan, which which is just a snapshot today, look, of us looking forward as to where we may be going. What we may be confronted with and what decisions that you totally may have to make in the future in terms of in terms of future. Without any delay, we'll ask the Black and Beach guys to themselves.
Sure. Should we stand some up there or say here or?
We can.
Enjoy it.
If you want to sit.
The table is just close to near mic to make sure you're here.
Okay, no problem. I can do that.
I'm very friendly, so.
Look and share a mic. Do you not have a mic?
Hey. My name is Rochelle Johnson. I've been supporting utilities for the last fifteen-ish years. Doing both integrated resource planning and power procurement. I'm here today supporting BPU's 2024 integrated resource plan. And we'll be going through some slides to provide some background, some initial information. There's going to be a number of different opportunities for us to provide you information, but this is just kind of initial.
Sure. My name is Chuck Poston. Engineer at Black and Beach. And I've spent fifteen years in and around the utility business, working power plant level, at the regulate, state regulatory level, and now with Black and Beach doing consulting. And I'm also part of the team working through assisting BPU with their 2024 IRP. If I can jump in, we do have majority of the staff that also worked on this. So there are some questions that may need to come back and stay out. Certainly, we have them here. We have Black and Beach here.
And you, I, for my benefit, introduce the staff so that I can start with Ingrid. Any work we might.
I'm Ingrid, I'm the director for our environmental department.
Jeremy Edg. Big words. The bone director of all in here.
Interferers director of financial plan.
And was there anyone else? I know Maurice left the utility. Is there anyone else that Don stopped? The executive director of the plant works on it as well, but he's out of office. All right. So that was BPU team and part of the Black and Beach team that also assisted. We're not able to make because of scheduling issues. But there's other, other resources they presented, you know, and made available to help us get to this point.
Next slide. So today's agenda is going to be pretty high level. We wanted to give this team kind of some more background leading up to some subsequent conversations that we'll have around the details around the IRP itself. Hopefully, this is a conversation. So, you know, the, to the extent you have questions for us, Black and Beach, or the planning organization, or the planning team, please feel free to jump in. We're going to go through some of the background around the IRP, what's driving the need for this integrated resource plan, and then some of the framework and assumptions that are going into the analysis to see y'all's feedback. We'll also talk a little bit about next steps, what this process is going to look like, maybe what the stakeholder engagement process is going to look like as well. So, next slide. What is an integrated resource plan? It, it basically is a resource plan for the utility to meet its needs over the next long period of time. This particular IRP is for, for 20 years. We'll be looking to meet the peak load and energy requirements of the utility for the next 20 years using various resource portfolios. A BPU does specifically have a requirement due to it's an agreement with the Western Area Power Administration to have an IRP every five years. The last IRP y'all completed was in 2019. So this one is as timely as it's. But this one is also going to be a bit more complicated from the last IRP, and we'll go into a little bit more details about that. But we're actually addressing a, a capacity need that's coming up in the next five to 10 years.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Maybe I need to, but, but I'm, I'm just new to the board. Okay, the Western Area Power Administration. Is that a state agency or is that?
It is the entity that you have a contract with for hydro. It is a, a government entity.
It is a federal agency.
Federal agency.
So it's, yeah, so one of the federal agencies to provide hydro power to BPU. So we have a contract with both WAPA, which is down in the Colorado area, Rockland region. And then we have one with Southwest Power Administration as well, which is, again, it's a bunch of dams and hydro is what it, what it is.
So that's not Southwest Power Pool.
It is, it is different. So Southwest Power Administration, which is not WAPA, but it is a hydro, federal hydro facility. And then there's Southwest Power Pool, which is our regional transmission operator. Those are two distinct things.
Say, explain to me hydro.
What's that?
Hydro.
This is hydro only, hydro only is, is, is WAPA.
Thank you very much.
Hydro electric power, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Water running over dams, turning and turban.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Andrew, I just know the percentage of our power that comes from that. It's a very small percent.
It is. It, it's a very small percentage. A few percentage points, I don't know exactly, but we have, we have some government hydro through both Southwest Power, South, Southwest Power Administration's WAPA. And then we have that seven megawatts of orange as well. So but hydro is not as big here in the central part of the US as it is in the Washington area out, out west. Yes.
So to meet that capacity need, which we'll be talking about further on in the presentation, but to meet that capacity need, we'll be looking at several different portfolios, different analyses in order to see what might meet that capacity need across various different scenarios. We'll be testing out things like the, a range of market drivers like fuel costs. We'll be looking at different environmental strategies around carbon emissions and the new EPA rules and sustainability targets. And then also just new different resource alternatives from conventional to renewable generation to meet those capacity needs and the cost impacts associated with those different alternatives. We do, we do use what's called a production cost model or a capacity expansion model. It's called Plexos. And that helps us simulate the, the BPU system along with the broader market. And ultimately, what we'll get out of this is a look at the total supply cost impact of various portfolio options in the next 20 years. So an integrated resource plan, basically it is a long-term look to help support near-term decisions. So what we'll be looking at is very diff, various different strategies to meet BPU's customers' needs over the next 20 years to support decisions that need to be made tomorrow in the next five years. So ultimately, this very in-depth evaluation is going to help you look at what decisions need to be made to develop an action plan to support those, you know, those different various needs. Things that we're going to be looking at is flexibility requirements within the region. As, as folks are aware, there's an increased amount of renewable generation within the region and within the, and, and BPU as well as has increased amount of renewable generation. So flexibility requirements is, is important to look at. You also have some aging infrastructure and some potential, you know, deactivations of units over the next planning horizon. There's also broader market drivers like fluctuations and cost uncertainty, things changes in the SVP market that might influence the way you think about the development of your portfolio. And then there's also the environment, environmental compliance risk, as we've seen over the last decade. And even before that, rules around environmental needs and compliance has changed. So this is going to take a look at how that, you know, how that risk influences your decisions. As I alluded to, back in 2019, y'all, y'all completed an integrated resource plan. And that one was a bit simpler. Y'all took a look at your current generation. Y'all identified the, you know, the, the the fact that generation met your requirements for the next five years. And you, you know, developed that report supporting that conclusion. You, you recognize that things may change with that, within that report, and that y'all put a plan together to address if any of those changes came to fruition. Now, as we alluded to, there is a capacity need that's identified in the next five to 10 years for BPU. Now that we're in the 2024 IRP cycle. So we're taking, we have a planning period for the next 20 years that we want to look at as these near-term decisions are going, can impact a very long-term period of time. Some of the things that, that are coming into play is that we've got some power purchase agreements that are set to expire within the planning horizon. You also have some changes within the SVP market, specifically around capacity requirements that are driving an increased need for capacity within your portfolio. And then also the accreditation that you get for your resources change over time. With that, that's, that's driving some more capacity requirements within the portfolio. And as we've alluded to, there's some new announcements from the EPA around rules and regulations for, for carbon emissions. That's also driving some questions around some of your, your coal plants. And also questions around the options for replacing any additional capacity in the future.
Okay, I'd also jump in here and say that because of this every five-year requirement, you know, doing an IRP on a regular basis really emphasizes the iterative approach. This, you know, any kind of resource planning is not a set it and forget it type of options. It is something that is continually reviewed and reassessed as conditions change. Back at the 2019, the conclusions in the 2019 IRP valid in 2019. Conditions, you know, five years later, now looking into a, further into the future, there are different conditions. Different things have happened in those five years. And so, you know, in five years after this, certainly there'll be another iteration, another chance to look at this as a holistic planning tool.
Thanks. Next slide. Because as we talked about, this will be not the last time you hear about the IRP in the next several months. We do have a plan to come talk to you, or at least BPU is going to come talk to you over the, several times over the next couple of months. Just to kind of map out where we're at in the process. We are in the input development phase. So we're, so Black and Beach and BPU are working very closely together to make sure that the inputs that we put into the model and the ex, and the constraints that we put into models, into the model are consistent with the expectation of the BPU system. So whether we're talking about load, capacity, market assumptions, fuel assumptions, those are, we're working hand in hand with BPU to develop those as an input into the process. We expect to finalize the input and scope of this IRP by the end of the month, so June 30th, so that we can take off and get into the modeling piece of this. Now, we, you know, Chuck's working very diligently and already working on the modeling piece of it. But the, the real heavy lifting is going to start in July, where we're going to start working through some of, of the modeling aspects. We'll come back to y'all in around July 3rd to talk a little bit more about what that's going to look like, what some of the outputs might look like in, from these cases. Also, as we get through the modeling process, we're going to come back again July 17th to talk about some of the results of the modeling itself with the anticipation of completing the modeling by July 31st. Then we move into the finalization of the IRP. That's where we're going to, that's the, you know, you know, what is coming out of this model and how does it inform BPU's strategy and actions for the next five years? That, that will get incorporated into not only any sort of additional iterations of the modeling, but also into the final report and the strategy for BPU going forward. Our anticipation is that we will finalize the IRP by August 14th with board approval by the 21st.
See, I, I didn't print out the, this, and I will have it in front of me, but that's okay. That's okay. So just wanted to point out too, if you can go back prior to November 1st, we did do a generation assessment, but taking a look at current generation assets and kind of evaluating the state and condition of where we sat as of today. And that would, that would be helpful for, that was helpful for determining, okay, but you know, if we maintain those, then what type of budget do we set up, what type of life expectancy may still be there? So that we can determine how to move forward with the IRP.
Yeah, that's a, it's a key input. Your, as, as Chuck will go through, a key input is the life of different assets. Because essentially, depending on capacity needs and transmission requirements, replacement of those assets may be required. So yeah, that's a key input to that. Any other questions on this, comments?
We really appreciate the, the layout of how we proceed with the, the IRP. We received a suggestion from a individual with the Sierra Club. And they were suggesting that we look at another organization besides Black and Beach. And they were saying, do you understand their, their purpose, their reason rationale for asking, this came from outside of, of you understand why they suggested that we?
They didn't say anything to me.
They didn't say anything. Okay, so, so I, when I suggest to him, you, you need to speak with, with Mr. Johnson. Because we're familiar with the work that you've done in the past and, and what you're capable of doing. And why you made that suggestion, I didn't, I didn't quite understand. But it suggested that, that we look at other organizations. And I didn't understand why that was, was, was proposed. But I'm sure he'll, he'll, when it comes to our, the public comments, I'm sure they will want to have some input. So they, they both forced their desire to want to participate in this process. And they'll, they'll have okay, but, but yes, in terms of what you just stated, they have contacted me and all about that.
I know there's, there's quite a few different things to plug into this, right? Assumptions about what the future landscape looks like, cost of different energy sources, regulatory environment, production capacity, you know, aging of assets. On all of those, how much of that comes from us as an organization saying, hey, we've done them? We're giving you our projection of here's all our capacity. How much comes from you all as sort of a third-party group who maybe does this in other places and says, here's sort of the collective wisdom of that experience? Or is it a blend of those two?
Yes, it is. It is definitely a mix. BPU staff have intimate knowledge of your assets and their capabilities and plans for those. And we can bring to the table things that are more larger market centric. So, and both of those things are needed to create a detailed model for the IRP. So it's really been a joint effort.
Thank you.
So planning objectives. So these are the things that get balanced as we look at optimizing your resource portfolio going forward. We were talking with Andrew even right before this about, about how important balance is, because you're never going to have a perfect system at a reasonable price. And you can't necessarily have a portfolio full of renewables and support reliability. So the, the planning objectives here do support looking at kind of a balance between all of the requirements across, across your, your, your customer base and your regulatory base. The, the four main ones that we've identified, and there's, there's others as well. One is system reliability. For purposes of this IRP, the things that we look at is your ability to meet energy with your resources and a, a small portion of the market capacity. Same, and flexibility as, as load fluctuates from day to day and integration within a portfolio. We also are looking to minimize rate impacts. The actions that we want to take will support low rates for customers as, as going forward. Environmental stewardship. So that includes local and national emission requirements. We, we keep bringing up the EK requirements that just came out. But also there are customer-driven sustainability needs that, that we want to take, we want to incorporate within this IRP process and keep in mind as we look at optimized portfolios and activities forward. And then finally, regulatory compliance. You operate within SPP and have regulators at which you have to speak to and, and kind of support that, those objectives. So within this IRP process, we incorporate that within the I'm going to toss it over to Chuck to talk a little bit about the need that we see for the next 20 years.
This kind of is a preparatory statement here. During this discussion about load forecast, I'll, I'll use the terms load and demand interchangeably. And in this context, those mean the same thing. And that means, you know, the amount of energy necessary to supply the needs of customers. So one of the first steps that we took in the IRP process was to generate a load forecast. If we're going to make assumptions about energy needs in the future, we need to know what those, those needs are. To develop the rigorous method by which to make this forecast, we start with historical data. And we receive that from BPU staff. We had customer class level data, load data for 2011 through 2022. So a good chunk of time to use as our starting point for this analysis. Once we received that information, our team looked at it on a, on a class basis, and then classes being residential, commercial, industrial, and others. And for each of those classes, performed a regression analysis based on different economic factors. Examples here, population, GDP, income, weather, and COVID is one of them. Yes, yep, you correctly anticipated. To help us create this regression analysis, to help us make that future forecast. If we can go to the next slide. And it was expected and shown here that the different classes had different variables associated with them. And that's because different types of customers have different usage patterns. You can look, there was an indicator variable for COVID years that was used for commercial and industrial customers that we didn't use for the residential customer. And think about, you know, what happened to the economy and manufacturing, commercial activity versus energy use in the home, you can see that those could be two very different things.
GM strike.
Yep. But, you know, for residential customers, heating and cooling degree days. And that's a, a measure of weather, you know, is the number of days, I believe, above and below 65 degrees. So it's an indicator of energy demand related to heating and cooling people's homes and businesses. Anyway, so each of these was chosen specific to the BPU customer classes and their historic data from 2011 through 2022. Once those class-specific variables were chosen, a forecast was done for each class individually. And then added together to come up with the total load forecast for the system. Here on this slide, we have the results of the load forecast. And the two columns there have results for annual energy in gigawatt hours and peak demand in megawatts. So annual energy is the total amount of energy used by BPU customers throughout the year. Where peak demand is the highest amount of energy in use at any one time. The peak demands were determined through a separate regression analysis based on that historic data.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
And, and this may actually be, Andrew, for you. So.
So, um. Not to put the cart before the horse, but um, we all know that there is a potential. To build Arrowhead West in Wyandotte County. Um, and I assume if it's remains in Bonner, that's an evergreen problem, but if it's not in Bonner, it's our problem, right? And so, um, I I believe that their lease is up in Kansas City, Missouri in twenty thirty. Um, so does this five year analysis, and I understand it's it's not a thing, so. But you guys have a way to potentially factor, I mean, like, I have to believe the casino is a good. Thank God we have a casino because power's on all the time over there, right? I mean, it's it's, I I'm thinking, you know, Margaritaville is getting ready to open, you know, all these things that we have massive developments. And potential massive developments out west, so I just wonder how that's factored in here.
So kind of kind of as Chuck mentioned, we we do look at historical uh, plus expectations moving forward. With those expectations, obviously, we don't know what the world holds, right? Whether a data center showed up on our door, whether Arrowhead West showed up on our door. Whatever any of these loads it may be, obviously, we do see, you know, warehouse space continuing to increase. We have some lightning and battery moving and we have some of those things that continue to move uh, into our service territory. So we do expect an upward slope, whereas if you look from two thousand to nearly two thousand twenty, we've really seen a very flat.
Right.
Turb, because that was the world that we lived in.
Right.
And so between electric vehicles, electrification in general, uh, the federal government is pushing both of those agendas. So we are forecasting an upward slope and we do, as as Chuck will point out later. Is we do have a scenario where we're seeing this type of load growth. And then we have another scenario where we tick it up even greater. Um, again, it's only as good as the, I'll say, the estimates that we use.
Right.
Um, but it is a living document, so as things change, as a large load comes in. We will have to reevaluate what that position looks like, but we did try to forecast the best we can based off of. I'll say the knowledge that we have, but yeah, we're obviously where Arrowhead West is.
Figured you figured you might be.
Well, we do have two points out there that we sell there. So uh, they could run those beef uh, for redone, see if they could want, I mean, the number of things you're going to develop those data, right? So we do have two points out there that we sell in that same area. That we sell three phase and then we have a single face sale point uh, back to the north of there that would probably be accomplished, but these two.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
One thing I point out too is this this graph, as conservative as it is, steel does not recharge, just compete. Know our system P.
Right.
It's much greater, uh, I was looking at these, I said, wow, I said.
But you know, as as Andrew has already said, I mean, there's contingencies there for things change, you know, we can certainly flex and. And uh, and try to meet that.
I mean, I'm just trying to speak it into existence. So much easier to go to Chiefs games.
The other thing I would point out is is this set of data as presented is is the load forecast is calculated, but it doesn't include. An additional change that was made to account for system losses. So uh, within the the model itself, this data is uh. Has an additional processing step to account for the energy losses due to transmission and distribution. So uh, that is taken into account for the final product. The difference between uh, energy consumed, I guess, by the customer versus what has to be generated. To deliver that energy to the customer. Next. So uh, once our load forecast is known, uh, we have to start considering about how we're going to. Meet that load with generation. And uh, the first and best options are to look at the resources BPU currently has. It's made up of facilities that BPU owns and uh, long term purchase power contracts. Those include the, the contracts include the hydroelectric contracts we talked about beginning the meeting. And uh, wind and solar contracts in addition to a landfill gas contract as well. Did you have a question? Okay. Um. So if we look at existing capacity by fuel type, you can see um, about a third. Of the capacity. Uh, in BPU's portfolio is made up of wind, solar, landfill gas. And hydroelectric uh, power. Um, and again, that's that's on a capacity basis, on a generation basis, I believe it's higher than a third. Is it closer to?
So, so yeah, it it. Yes, generally it makes up about forty five to forty eight percent of the total generations that we generally produce. It makes up about fifty five percent of our retail sales. On that basis, so.
That's that's where BPU stands currently. Here's probably good to also take a minute to make a distinction between uh, the capacity on this page. And what's called firm capacity or accredited capacity. Within SPP Southwest Power Pool, there are requirements to have. Um. Firm capacity to be able to meet your peak system load, which is part of the uh, load forecast. Um, market participants need to be able to meet their peak load plus fifteen percent margin on top. The firm capacity, it had, there's a system for calculating that that SPP employs. And so that is a fraction of a percentage of the maximum capacity of the unit. And typically, the firm capacity for thermal power plants. Those power plants fueled with coal, natural gas or oil, dispatchable units. That firm capacity is gonna be a a higher percentage of its maximum capacity than would be assigned to a uh, a wind or solar facility. So the implication of that is if you wanted a certain amount of firm capacity. Uh, from say fifty megawatts of firm capacity, um, you would need a. Thermal power plant of a certain size greater than fifty megawatts, sixty megawatts perhaps. But to get that from a a solar farm, you would need, you know, more than a hundred megawatts of capacity to to. Earn that firm capacity requirement. So that. Influences uh, the modeling and how uh, resources may be chosen in the future. To help meet that firm capacity required.
This may be a moot point, because at the end of the day, you need to follow the regulations that are given to us by the SPP, but. Do you all do independent modeling on that, or do we just use the SPP calculations when we're looking through this?
For a firm capacity?
Uh, yeah, as far as, you know, what for being able to, you know, make sure everyone's lights and. Power stay on in the middle of January in a cold snap. Do we do our own calculation on that, or do we just take the SPP?
Um, is a game method, um, if, I don't know if you do it in house or if SPP does it for you.
So the so the way the rules work with SPP is that they have criteria that you have to beat. And so I'll say our thermal units, right? So current day on our thermal units, we are required to test those at high ambient temperature days. Um, and and do those type of things. And then moving forward, they're putting in forced outage rates and those type of things to to do that as well. On the renewable side, they're using effective load carrying capability. Effectively, the way we've historically done it up until this point uh, in twenty twenty four is. You you essentially take your load profile and you take the, I'll say, renewable portfolio. Profile and you look at the top three percent of the hours effectively. And that tells them how much that generation matches up with your highest load hours. And that's what determines the value for that, and so that's done on the hydro side and that's done on the renewable side or the. Solar and wind side as well, so it's really a a rule based off of SPP. And then we we'll do the analysis in house, but it's really based off the numbers that we produce every single day, so.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll just also mention as kind of an output to the model itself. Uh, through to the Plexus model across the various strategies, you will, you can kind of pull out certain reliability metrics. Not necessarily ELCC, but some similar metrics like L L E. Or uh, unserved energy, things like that, that you could pull from from the model.
The uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, loss of load expectation and did I use a different one? Oh, unserved energy, that's nuts.
Yeah, if there was simply not enough energy to go around.
Yeah.
Sure. If you had a blackout or a brownout. Um, okay, let's do the next slide. Um. So uh, we talked about existing resources, what capacity is. So this kind of brings us to this uh, long term look at capacity needs. Um, there are a couple of things that are kind of coming together here in similar timeframe that are. Driving these capacity needs, one, we go back to last summer, I believe it was, SPP changed their. Um, reserve planning margin percentage from twelve percent up to fifteen percent. They're requiring additional margin to be held. Uh, and then starting in twenty twenty seven, there's gonna be a change in how that capacity accreditation uh, is done. Which is going to result in a decrease in uh, accredited or firm capacity from the existing units. Uh, so kind of getting it squeezed from both ends, getting less firm capacity. Um, at the same time, they're wanting more. And this isn't a BPU specific change or issue. This is something that affects all market participants in SPP. Um, now a mitigating factor in this is uh, over this planning horizon. As we discussed earlier, the amount of load growth is forecasted to be relatively small. So I've uh, don't need a lot of extra beyond what is uh, already there. But we still have to think about how to make up for its losses we're gonna see due to those other changes. Um, so in twenty, in the graph, you know, we have the orange bars, that's the available firm capacity being forecast. And the blue line is gonna be the need to be met. So in in twenty twenty seven, we see a decrease in firm capacity associated with uh, change in the accreditation method. And then um, there are some small changes between twenty twenty seven and twenty thirty seven. As a few of the small uh, purchase power agreements expire. And that firm capacity rolls off. And then in uh, twenty thirty eight, the jump there is associated with the end of the uh. Seminole Bend Wind PPA, which is a fairly substantial DPA. Um.
PPA.
Purchase power agreement, sorry.
Um.
Still the base case.
This is still the base case and um. Under this set of assumptions, none of the thermal, existing thermal units currently in operation by BPU are um. Forecast to retire during this period, all the, all the thermal units, all the natural gas, coal, all units. Are assumed in this scenario to still be running.
And those purchase power agreements can be renewed, correct?
Um. Yes, but.
It's it's all an agreement, right? So um, yes, would those developers prefer to renew those contracts? Absolutely they would. Um, but likely the the price of those agreements will change from where they're at today, right? So generally, there's tax credits associated with those renewable facilities that would then impact what we did going forward. Um, but we would absolutely literally look at um, different potential agreements um, going forward. Whether that was, again, a purchase power agreement. Um, the reason historically municipals did purchase power power agreements is because we were not able to take advantage of the tax credits. Uh, today, though, those tax credits have changed, and so we can now look at a broader universe of what we do going forward. Um, again, you may go purchase power agreements, you may go a mix of both, either, you know, self applying. Or purchase power agreement, but we would definitely look at how those purchase power agreements look. As part of this this study, uh, in terms of costs that we expect, whether it be wind, solar, storage, uh, going forward on those times. Or whether thermal makes more sense, uh, those are all the the study pieces that we'll see going forward.
Thank you.
I think one of the things probably good also mentioned here is kind of the why. Why does SPP want there to be this planning reserve part? It's about reliability. And um, you know, we wanna make sure that BPU customers specifically and. The SPP market as a whole, uh, can provide the energy that's needed when it's needed. So that's why they're imposing these uh, additional requirements to try to increase system reliability now. Um. Some of the things to consider is, you know, well, what if those uh, requirements aren't met? Uh, there can be financial penalties to consider, um, that can be. Um, significant. Uh, again, this is not something that's BPU specific. Um, major players in the SPP market, large utilities are looking at this same problem, starting in about the twenty twenty seven timeframe. So there are gonna be a lot of people at the same time looking for additional capacity. Um.
That that's exactly right, and that's one of the biggest challenges here is not only do we fall short in twenty twenty seven. I'll say globally with an SPP, the vast majority of all utilities are gonna fall short beginning in twenty twenty seven. So obviously, if everybody's short on capacity, you know what that does to the cost of of capacity and so forth. So it will rise going forward, it will put more demand on the system itself. Uh, but that's exactly what this project is supposed to do, is allow us to look out. Um, and every other utility is kind of in the same boat as we are, looking at how they meet that that void on on their system. Because we're all in the same boat uh, moving forward.
And again, you know, looking back, uh, that's twenty nineteen IRP. Uh, this wasn't, you know, this was before these changes had been proposed and made and. Uh, and so now that's why it's so important to come back and revisit these things on a regular basis. Because as condition change, as conditions change in the market, um, some of the planning decisions have to change as well. Um, so now that we've talked about, you know, capacity needs, uh, let's go to the next slide. Um, and talk about some additional considerations that have to go with that. Um, in April of this year, EPA finalized new rules related to carbon emissions from power plants. Um, these have the potential to really impact the future operation of existing coal plants. Like nearmen uh, creek unit one. Um. And uh, also natural gas and oil fired plants, but also uh, new or reconstructed. Dust fire combustion turbines as well. Um. Within this IRP, I know we spent a lot of time looking at, uh, plan to spend a lot of time looking at how this could affect nearmen one. Um, try to summarize a lot of these words up here, but if no changes, under these rules, if no changes were made. To the uh, design or operation of the plant, it would have to be shut down or retired prior to January first, twenty thirty two. Um, if the plant were modified by January first, twenty thirty to co-fire with forty percent natural gas. In addition to the coal that it burns, in order to reduce overall CO two emissions. Uh, that operational period could be extended by up to seven years. But it was still uh, need to retire before January first, twenty thirty nine. Uh, and there's a third option of these new rules where if a uh, carbon capture and sequestration. System were installed at the plant uh, before January first, twenty thirty two. It could continue to operate beyond twenty thirty nine with no mandated retirement date.
Good question. Will we have a copy of this slideshow or? Good question. Will we have a copy of this slideshow before I try and write everything?
You already.
Oh, I already do.
Yeah.
Sounds expensive.
Um, and of course, you know, something to consider is modifications to nearmen one to uh accommodate some of these possible changes. That's, you know, costs money. And so we have to weigh those costs against, you know, the, the benefits of continuing to operate nearmen one versus options for how to potentially replace its generation and firm capacity. Um. Ingrid, did you have anything else you wanted? I know you have, this is your, this is your house. Um, if you wanted to.
Now, it, it, there are big decisions obviously to make. Um, I will be okay, so presenting on the environmental, um, it went to a supportive, if you like. So, I'm kind of explaining what all this actually is. Um, you know, with, with that said, we took several of the key or stringent requirements to model in the IRP um to address those concerns. You can't take each single one because there's a lot of them in these rules, but some that are uh would be the worst case.
Ingrid, how long have you been with us?
Since two thousand and eight.
Wow, I'm so pleased to see you all.
Thank you.
Ingrid, um, prior to the adoption of these rules, the April twenty twenty four rules, wh- what was our planned retirement date for nearmen?
You know, I don't think we've set.
You don't have one?
And uh, these multi units, um, you know, their lifespan can be six years more, so. And we haven't set that date.
I think that when they were talking about the, the AQC that we, the additions that we did to it, that that would extend the life or we'd be able to use it for another thirty years.
That's exactly. So the reason we did that was to make the match rule, per the air toxic standard. Well, one of the four rules that came out. Reminisce that's rule, so. Stringent levels, but since we planned well, then well, that's impacted us. Um, but with greenhouse gas, and you recall, there was the clean power plan. And then the affordable clean energy rule. So the clean power was under Obama. Then we had what we call the issue for the affordable energy rule for Trump. So he worked diligently for years on each of those. Uh, and then right before we submitted, because our state plan um where we work with the state, the K D H E and so forth to get these done, there's, you have to commit your unit to one of these options. So if we say we're going to retire or put in CO2 carbon capture and continue to run a worse bigger retirement date, co-firing natural gases for, for others, then that is written into the state plan and it's important. Yeah, there are these, you know, there's many ways to try to meet rules other than say carbon capture, which is expensive and uh super realistic given the area we're in um versus what they're candidates, but there are, you know, potentially other things.
Um, thank you. And kind of an additional complication or uncertainty around this is while the rules were finalized by the EPA in April, uh, they have been challenged in court. So there is an ongoing legal process um about these rules.
What circuit are they in, Chuck? What circuit are they being reviewed in? Do you know, Angie?
I. Wait.
So with the greenhouse gas rule, we uh worked with the American Public Power Association, EPPA, as you all are aware, and um did join in on that first day of this post-rule. Um, we um also filed the declaration. It was a catch to that state. So this, this is being challenged currently. Um, it hasn't been decided yet.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm looking for what court it's being challenged in.
Yep, decided where it's going. They're still filing the challenge. They're still filing the state motions.
Are we filing those with, with the EPA right now?
Correct.
Okay, so it's still at the agency level. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you. Got it. There'll be a lottery, so.
I guess, uh, some APPAers.
I think the.
Oh, I'm sure, absolutely. Nobody wants to collide with this. I mean, I get it, but.
Uh, honestly, there's like twenty five states or something that are a neighbor of, and then you're being asked.
Sure.
And there's, um, you know, it could be where the gas portion of this comes out and the rest of the carbon capture is on the southern side of the way, or it could just be stayed. We don't know. But those motions across the United States, including some others, it's like I had a file against.
No, I, I get it. Thank you. I just thought it was in the courts.
Explain that to our customers. Well, that did take us a pause. It is because of coming out. I do run this course to where we knew more about it, and now we can input more of that into this planning process.
Are, are they in effect today? When do they go into effect? May twenty twenty four? Thank you.
Before they came out and the greenhouse gas was.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions on the environmental side?
Again, Ingrid is going to come a few weeks and give you guys full update on where we are and what, uh, what's out there.
Oh, okay, next slide please. Alright, so the analytical framework, um, the, the way this process works, there's, there's four key steps that lead to kind of informing your strategy or your action plan or the finalization of your IRP, um, depending on kind of what comes out of, of the evaluation itself. Um, the first step is the determination of need. Chuck just went through that of around the different drivers that, that produce the need at which we'll solve for. Um, the second step is the scenario development. So essentially, you're, you're looking at developing various inputs and strengths to put on the model based on different outcomes of, of the future. So you can see how different types of portfolios may perform under different uh, different uh areas of concern.
Including the cheese prospect.
Yes, including that one. Um, so that's, that, we'll, we'll go, so just this presentation specifically goes through in more detail, the determination of need and the stereo development. Uh, the remaining pieces, the portfolio development, supply costs, details around that will come out in later presentations. But of course, we can answer any questions about what that might look like. Um, but so the second step here, the scenario development, we'll go through what scenarios have been developed, uh, been outlined for this particular IRP process. Once that's finalized, we will work through the Plexus model to develop various portfolios that meet those requirements at the lowest reasonable cost based on the constraints at which we put into the model. And then we'll develop total supply cost impacts across the various portfolios. So you can see how they may change depending how the cost changes, depending on the supply, uh, depending on the, the, the resources, the resource mix they uh make up your portfolio. And that will help inform whatever strategy you have forward and what action actions you may need to take to now and your next uh IRP. So the planning scenarios, uh, we have ten planning scenarios.
Yes.
Ten planning scenarios. The first four here, one, the first scenario here is just your base case. Um, this, this scenario is basically status quo, what we expect going, uh, going forward. It's your base load forecast, your base fuel supply forecast. Uh, we do have incorporated some um expiration of contracts. Uh, but basically, this is the, the, the status quo case. Um, scenarios two, three, and four look at specifically nearmen three one and the implications of the EPA rule and different strategies around uh, around complying with those rules. Scenario two specifically is looking at co-firing natural gas, uh, co-firing nearmen one is natural gas. Um, uh, essentially, it's, you'll, 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 you'll co-fire forty percent by twenty thirty and then deactivate it by twenty thirty nine. Scenario three looks at carbon capture, uh, where you would have to implement uh carbon capture by twenty twenty two and be able to run it through the entire planning horizon. Uh, and now in three, looks at specifically uh enhanced NOx controls to, to assess, you know, those, those new rules based on what Ingrid just, just was talking about early. Uh. Uh, scenarios five through seven looks specifically at market drivers that drive a, that drive uh variations to your, your, your resource uh mix. One is uh scenario five and scenario six looks at different fuel prices. So high fuel price, certainly gas prices, and a low fuel price, specifically gas prices. This is just the only change between the base case and these cases are the prices. Those fuel prices will be applied both to the BPU resources and the broader market, which we'll talk a little bit about the market here, slides. Scenario seven looks at a higher growth rate, you know, from, uh, you know, the potential for growth and the answer to around that's important. So this, this looks like, uh, looks at a higher growth rate of fifty percent higher than what's assumed in the base case. Scenario eight through, eight through ten looks at various strategies outside of just the low-cost alternatives, uh, which is kind of spit out from, from the model itself. Uh, one of the, well, not necessarily a strategy, but maybe a total uncertainty is a higher reserve requirement. So basically, SPP imposing a higher, uh, higher capacity requirement on to you. We've, we've increased this over time in the uh planning horizon. So it starts as at the fifteen percent, which is our, our base case uh assumption. And then uh after twenty thirty, it increases to eighteen percent and then moves up to twenty percent, starting in twenty thirty seven. Um, scenario nine is a net zero target. So basically looking at what BPU would have to do in terms of needs, uh, the net, uh, net zero carbon emissions portfolio and the, the cops associated with that might look like. And the target would be completed by twenty forty. And then you've got a scenario ten, which looks at replacing your two oil CTs uh with uh gas-fired resources in twenty twenty. So again, what, what we're going to do is these are inputs and constraints that you put into the model within uh so that you can assess the cost implications or, you know, reliable, reliable implications of these different portfolios, uh, and compare them to, to the base case. Any questions about these?
We have a switch, you know, currently, start before on the less of those scenarios. Uh, which one? Or how many of those um are scenarios minus the uh nearmen?
Well, in the um modeling, uh, if we go back one more slide. Um, scenarios two, uh, scenario two, there is a requirement that nearmen one would retire prior to January one, twenty thirty nine. So that would be a, a constraint placed in the model where it would be uh forced to retire. Um, now, one of the things we're still working through with our colleagues here is exactly how we want to treat um, the operator nearmen one and some of the other scenarios. We can allow the model, if we choose, to make economic decisions um to retire. And um, that's something we can implement to allow the model to make that decision if it thinks it is optimal to retire the unit. Or we can, if we choose, uh, allow the, or not allow the model to retire and say, you know, that's an assumption we want to make is it's in BPU's interest to keep running that unit.
Hmm, okay. I did, Rob, go back on the gas. What next slide, Rob? On the gas price sensitivity, I don't, you know, remember how that's a scale based on price? And what, what did you do in terms of modeling, uh? For example, I mean, there's certainly a lot of things that's going on in the world that may affect gas prices. Uh, so if something worse situation happens and prices fluctuate beyond what you, I don't see a certain percentage increase in there, but beyond that, then what are your assumptions based on gas pricing, go, that gas prices going up to like we, it were two, three years ago?
Uh, like a, like a very high.
Yes.
Like a sustained, we don't, we don't have a scenario for a sustained, like.
Or over a longer period of time. I'm not sure. And I, I didn't have a chance to ask in any of our meetings and I'm in all this discussion with you, so.
Sure. With the uh fuel price sensitivities, um, I, I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry, but we're going to increase year over year uh at an accelerated rate. The increases seen in our base format. And um one of the things we also have to adjust for during that uh sensitivity is, as Michelle said, is we also have to uh modify the market prices within the model to account for that increase as well. Because if you don't, the, 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 within SPP, natural gas-fired power plants are usually uh price-setting. They're the ones that are on the margin that helps set the price for the market. And so uh market price is sensitive to the natural gas price. Higher natural gas price will generally cause market prices to increase across all of SPP. And so if we don't adjust the, the market prices in concert with natural gas prices, it would be essentially modeling what would happen if only BPU had a higher gas price. And that's not one of the sensitivities we're looking at. We would assume that BPU would, you know, participate in the market at, at similar prices to all other participants.
And we want to make sure that this is within. So because it's a twenty-year model and not like a two-year model, you want to be, and, and this, then the intent of the IRP is to look at a long-term plan. We want to make sure that the assumptions are within the range of reasonability and, and sustainable. So if you have extremely high gas prices, the expectation is that you would have a, a market that checks and adjusts and changes, you know, and, and picks up its production. And therefore, extremely high gas prices are probably not stable in the long unless there's some sort of driving factor that we don't see within our, you know, within our um horizon, environmental regulations or some sort of event that we're not accounting for. But this is intended to be within a range that's.
So the, the high fuel price sensitivity is technically ten percent higher than the baseline sensitivity.
Okay.
And the low fuel price sensitivity is ten percent below the baseline since uh fuel prices. And so that's kind of the bandwidth that you're getting. You're kind of getting that twenty percent uh direction on that. And so obviously, as, as fuel prices rise, right, the, the, the value of renewables would be increased because fuel prices are more expensive on the thermal units. As those fuel prices decline, the thermal prices on generation would become cheaper uh relative to the market. But um obviously, we don't know where those market, that especially gas prices, as Chuck mentioned, gas price has driven the market itself. And so just like we've seen in twenty two and twenty three, we see gas prices really high in twenty two and then really low, back to really low, really in twenty three. And so um we don't know exactly what they are, you know, the EIA, Black and Beach, everybody forecasts what that gas price is going to be. Um, and so I, I do think we have a pretty good bandwidth of, on their model of what that gas price is likely to be. Um, but there may be outlier years, just like we've seen in twenty twenty two, which would be an outlier year, which would be outside of the range that we're, we're forecasting.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't see that range there like I do in the other. That's why, I didn't know what assumption you were making, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not listed, but uh, and, and then on the high load growth, right? So that goes back to Rose's question a little bit is we are projecting a, a fifty basis point um increase in our, our load, uh, but this is going to be fifty percent above that. So essentially seventy-five basis point increase. So if, if we do see higher load growth come to Y and I count and come to KCK, uh, this would help capture what that is. uh this would help capture what that is, because effectively what that means is our shortfall is going to get greater, right? Because we're gonna have to make up more more ground on what our generation needs to do to meet that load requirement. So in that scenario seven, we're gonna have to have additional generation to meet those needs.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna go to Stevie's point, so Nairman's not there, and then we're playing through these other scenarios at the same time.
Well, yeah, it's something we're still working through.
Okay, good.
But exactly how to treat Nairman.
Right.
If we want to um allow the model to economically retire in the future.
Right.
Or if we want to uh allow or keep to have it kept in the model.
Okay.
Going forward.
So we've talked a lot about the model, the model, the thing I'm talking about, I'll just establish this Plexos model. This is a production cost model or a capacity expansion model that looks at BPU's uh system. So it's it's resources and it's load across uh the twenty-year period along with the broader market. And this will simulate the the generation and load requirements and uh.
Uh Mr. Cherry, point of order.
Um, okay, so uh. So within this model, we put in the the load forecast, the generation and all of the dynamics associated with that generation. Uh fuel from fuel for BPU specifically, specific resources and the fuel associated with the broader market. And everything gets simulated, and what gets spit out basically is the lowest cost resource portfolio to meet the needs for those particular constraints that we put within the model. So not only inputs, but our constraints are considered within it as well. Um. In order to meet the the requirements, we put kind of different resource options. So that includes, you know, solar, wind, uh thermal, different thermal resources and some market sources at which, you know, Chuck is gonna go a little bit more detail about. So next slide. So what does it, so what does it look like? The the key piece of it is the BPU region. So we have all of the resources, including the the other generators at Nairman, Quandero and Dogwood, along with some of the renewable resources that you have under contract, along with BPU's load, our load specifically, because this is our limitation. We do allow this uh allow BPU to interact with the broader market. Um but we have put a limit on that. Uh uh an assumption that we have made is plus or minus four hundred megawatts. So you could sell four hundred, up to four hundred megawatts, and you could uh capture up to four hundred megawatts from the market. And there the reason for that is to limit risk to new customers. For 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 one, you don't want to build a portfolio that over relies on the market to make up revenue, to make it possible. And in reverse, you don't want overly rely on the market, which provides exposure to to market price fluctuations. I mean, you don't have a lot of control first. So we have put that limitation on it. It also is is more reflective of what we've seen as we've kind of worked through some of the modeling process. It's more reflective of how we see the the resources actually operating, given that there is transmission constraints on on the system itself. Um now, this this assumption itself can can be changed. So as we're working through the different scenarios and different resources uh portfolio expansion uh analyses, we'll we'll keep an eye on out on that to make sure that it stays reasonable and that we're not hitting up against some sort of limit on a regular basis. And if we do, we'll come back to even checking and adjusting necessarily, necessary. There's no questions on this section, I'm gonna kick it back over to Chuck to talk about some of those.
All right, so Michelle just mentioned, um when looking at over this twenty-year planning horizon, um the Plexos model as an input has to have options for new resources to build. And so um these resources would then be uh chosen by the model, added to the BPU portfolio in order to meet its peak load uh and planning reserve margin requirements. Um when we were choosing these different supply alternatives, um there had to be some decisions made about what options to pick, what things to make available. Um part of that comes down to geography and geology. Um, you know, as kind of an extreme example, we do not let the model choose to build offshore ocean-based wind power, it's not a good option for Kansas. Um, we are, we can't use rivers. Um, we, you know, some things were just like, um, you know, uh geothermal power, geologically really suitable for this region, so we didn't include that as an option. Um, we also wanted to pick uh resource candidates that were considered technologically mature. Uh and by that, I mean, we didn't want to pick speculative or or unproven technologies that may exist in the future during the planning period, but that haven't really been shown to be realistic options yet. Um. So because we have a lot of different options in the model, we were trying to cover all our bases. Thermal uh generating units uh and renewables and energy storage as well. Uh so kind of list, general list of options are the simple cycle combustion turbines, uh similar to uh Nairman CT four currently exists, uh combined cycle combustion turbines similar to uh the contract with Dogwood or the ownership of Dogwood, rather. Uh and then uh solar wind farms, battery storage, like lithium battery-based battery storage systems, uh hybrid solar and storage systems, uh biomass facilities, and then also uh contracted or uh paper capacity that can be bought in the short term to make up small shortfalls uh as needed. Uh. Uh we've touched on this a little bit already, uh the market price forecast goes into this IRP is a key input. These represent the prices of energy in the local SPP market. Um. This market price forecast uh specifically comes from the latest of our Black and Beach uh energy market perspectives models. And what that is, it is a Plexos model that simulates, uh in this case, the entire eastern interconnect. But that is, it's imagine all of the United States east of the uh Rocky Mountains minus Texas um as one big system. And we simulate that and it's thousands of power plants and transmission lines and all the different load centers uh to come up with um forecast for uh market prices throughout that entire region. Um. In a way, you can look at this as kind of a really big IRP, because again, it looks at uh fuel price forecasts, load forecasts, new power plant build options, just like we're using here, uh transmission constraints, uh possible changes in environmental rules that can affect the the choice of uh new build outs. All those things go into this, what much larger model that then generate uh the market price curves. Um.
And it's playing the uh increase in the in near the near the end of the.
Um, yes, the increase we see there is, uh we talked about earlier, the um market price in SPP is directly related to the forecasted price for natural gas. And so the, that's the general trend of the the natural gas. Uh that has kind of a similar shape for its forecasted price increase toward the end of that uh planning period. Thank you. Um. And then the fuel price forecast itself, um again, this comes from the same uh EMP energy market perspectives model. Um. And we, I know we are, we've touched on this before again, but it's it's important to have the uh fuel price and market prices come from the same analysis because they are so intimately tied together. One will, in, you know, the 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 natural gas price especially influences that market price. And if you were to take a a separate na- uh natural gas price forecast and pair it with uh the market price forecast, it wouldn't necessarily be in alignment anymore. Like create some distortions in how the market operates in the model. Um, you know, in general, as was discussed a minute ago, higher fuel costs are gonna make the thermal units more expensive to run, um gonna make renewables look more appealing to the model because they don't have that fuel price. Um, and so uh along with the market price forecast, the fuel price forecast is one of the most important uh inputs into the model, which is why we're going to uh include those scenarios where we iterate up and down the sensitivity to see the uh the effects of that because of its importance.
Is there, I don't know, it's probably not an apples-to-apples comparison, but a projection on the cost of renewables over that same timeline. So I know, you know, purchased, if you got the agreement, the agreement is what it is, but we spoke to as some of those expire and there's pressure on the marketplace and cost of those might go up. At the same time, hopefully, over the next twenty years, we're seeing some advances in technology that, you know, might allow us to spread that capacity over more of the year. How do you take all those factors into place for something like that as opposed to just, you know, it's a little more straightforward on projection of what we think natural gas or oil is gonna cost?
Sure, for every kind of uh potential new facility, there's going to be an associated capital cost that's assumed for that, and those can vary over time. Um, we were just talking about this before the meeting started, where, you know, for, you know, mature technologies like combustion turbines or combined cycle kits, we don't really expect to see much change or the next one. That technology is is mature, it's set, and, you know, absent uh, you know, this supply constraints and the supply chain issues, um we think it'll be relatively steady where things like uh solar and wind, we think there are still some efficiencies to be found. And there may be some price decreases over time. And so that would be reflected in the model as it was, you know, it would be, for example, more expensive on a per kilowatt capacity basis to build a solar farm in twenty twenty-four than it would be to build in twenty forty.
Right. Do we look at all on, I know one of the big challenges renewables is being able to be reliable, you know, throughout your peak usage. How much are we able to make predictions on on the battery capacity, pricing, anything that, you know, might?
There are, um, you know, batteries are an option within the model, and of course, there's a capital cost of that. And um we are currently looking at four-hour batteries.
Mm-hmm.
And throughout the whole period as opposed to like an eight or a twelve.
Sure.
Looking at four-hour batteries, um. The uh, again, we're we're assuming in this particular scenario, in these particular scenarios, the the one, you know, lithium battery-based technology.
Yeah.
It's like fuel cells or compressed air storage or uh gravity-based systems. We're looking at, you know, kind of the main mainstay battery storage technology available today. But the the information we have uh know right now.
We do partner with our EP side, our EPC side of the business, not only to figure out more accurately how much it's costing today, because as as we've, as we've talked about, um costs have fluctuated recently quite a bit, not only on the renewables side specifically, but also recognizing there's some cost fluctuations on the the thermal side as well. Uh but looking uh working with them and our technology teams on how those those costs be changing, because you've got efficiencies you're seeing on the thermal side as well. You've got uh like heat rate improvements on new new frame, new frame.
That's an excellent point, the um uh. The new uh facilities that we consider within the model use essentially best-in-class technology.
Yeah.
The most efficient units that you can buy for a reasonable cost today as opposed to, you know, uh what might have been state-of-the-art twenty years ago and is currently in operation. Uh the things that are being installed today are more efficient. We want that efficiency to be reflected in the model as it, if it were to be built and as it were to run, uh those characteristics to be captured.
And the projections that we use for capital costs, at least on uh for the renewables side, is more of kind of these long-term sustainability, sustainable costs. Now, again, there are current market drivers that are kind of putting some upward pressure on those costs. Uh but over time, we think that those will check and adjust and it's reflected in my guess.
And the other thing to consider is, um, the model will not be building anything in twenty twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's, you know, you have to, there's lead times, it have to be, you know, procurement, design, contracts, all those things. And so um there is a period of time at the beginning of the model where those uh build options are blacked out.
Sure.
Because, you know, it's not realistic that a a new power plant could be built this year or next year even.
Nor is there a need that's.
Nor is there a need.
Yeah. And I and I'm assuming this is probably way too many layers to, you know, factor well down the the trail of variables to be able to accurately model. But, you know, as we look at things like technology and some of these evolve, assumption would be one way or another, that's going to have an effect on future regulations and SPP's calculations. But again, there were probably three or four factors down the road that are outside of our control.
Well, um, one of the scenarios actually looks at, uh, again, the uh increased reserve margin requirements. And uh one could look at that as sort of as renewable penetration increases, um their uh effective load carrying capacity is smaller than a plant.
Sure.
Because of that, um, that could result in a future where SPP would ask for a higher uh reserve capacity from its uh member utilities to help offset that, those lower or the higher penetration of of non-dispatchable resource.
Right. Thank you.
But just, oh, I just jump in. But yes, um, those are great questions, because, and that's one of the values of having Black and Beach partner with us on this IRP is there are all those forecasts in terms of what battery prices do look like going forward? What does solar look like going forward? Uh those type of things, because again, the model will capture what they believe that price to look like. Um and as I mentioned, we do believe it's downward sloping, um even though we've seen enough or trends over the last few quarters. Uh but long-term, they believe it's downward sloping. And again, that's where their EPC arm has so many tentacles that that looks at so many things versus the number of inputs that I see here regionally um are just not as vast. And so therefore, it should give us a better picture of what we do believe those prices and those costs to be on that that capital front on on renewables, but as well as thermals and and what changes there. So it it is a good advantage for us to have Black and Beach helping us with with that.
And I wouldn't want to compete with the computer program anyway.
Again, I I would like to emphasize that the computer program is a tool.
Mm-hmm.
And ultimately, all decisions.
Their inputs.
Yep. People are responsible for its inputs, and ultimately, at the end of the day, all decisions have to be made by people. So this is just another tool in our uh bag to be able to look at uh different options and help us uh move through things in a very systematic and rigorous way.
So when you look at fuel prices, just listening to some of this and Brett, I was thinking about regulation and other things. So what could he unpack this forecast on fuel prices? That, I mean, just one or two things that could probably sway prices.
Uh there, I was kind of mentioned earlier, um LNG, liquefied natural gas exports. Um, that could be an influence, what gets exported overseas, uh pipeline exports even to uh Mexico. I know that's a, it's a big deal down in Texas, those are increasing. Um, also, the development, further development of our natural gas basins and how their production could increase over time or stay the same or decrease depending on uh, you know, market, market needs. Uh also, things like um availability of natural gas pipeline capacity. Uh you can have all the natural gas in the world, but if you can't get it to where it's needed with pipelines, um, it's gonna be hard to use. Uh, you can have all the natural gas in the world, but if you can't get it to where it's needed with pipelines, um, it's going to be hard to use.
State was, you know, first recently, it's trying to streamline some of these permitting processes um, for a lot of renewables transmission and other things. And so, and, and Biden's infrastructure reduction act, right, to build out the the infrastructure for our, our, our pipelines or the natural gas pipelines. That's kind of what a lot of these environmental regulations are assuming and said, I'll be there by the time we need it. Um, so I just.
So why this coal, coal looks like it's the better fuel option, but what could impact coal prices?
Well, I wouldn't, so you, you can't compare the prices just because there are different heat rates. So that's.
No, I'm just, I'm just from a price point.
What could, like, what could impact price of coal? These new EPA regulations.
Right.
Um, you know, if, uh, depending on what the market is for coal in the future, you know, will it continue to be used widely within the power market, generate electricity or won't it? Um, you know, one would expect that, um, you know, if there's not a demand for, uh, a lot of coal in some regions, mines could close and restrict supply. Where if, you know, other regions, you know, still needed to, to be, uh, brought in by train, uh, there could be, you know, increased competition, increased prices. That sort of thing.
And Rachel, we, we spoke a little bit about that in our staff meeting today about the heat rate of going 40% natural gas and the availability of gas supplies, even though we believe we have the infrastructure there. But, yep, you know, can we get the gas here?
And that's, that's always something to consider is, um, you know, if you don't, the model is only as smart as the inputs, right? And so, um, that's why it's so important to work with B P U staff to know the intricacies of the system, what pipeline capacity is available, what options are even feasible to consider. Or if, um, you know, specifically this, uh, scenario where we look at co-firing nearmen ones with 40% natural gas, is there enough gas available? Can B P U procure and supply gas near one, do that without impacting the operation of the, uh, nearmen C T unit there at the same side? Those sorts of things all have to be, uh, worked out, uh, with, with the people in the know so that we can, uh, reflect them in the model correctly. Right, um. I think that's back to you.
So in a pink bomb, that's my. Um, so next steps, we've talked about most of these, so I'll just run through them again. And one, uh, again, we, we are working to finalize all of these model inputs, the extent there's any material changes from what we presented today, we'll make sure that it gets, you know, brought back to you as, uh, additional information. Uh, we are working to complete the base case scenario and, uh, assess those outputs. That's going to be something that we expect, anticipate there's an E T O at the next workshop meeting. Um, and as we move through this analysis, it may occur to, to the B P U team and to the Black and Beach team that some additional necessities are needed to kind of broaden the, the perspective that, that's going to be uh, taken into account as we get more information, as we work through the modeling process. Um, as we alluded to, we do, uh, uh, plan on being in a contact with the all around this process. Got another meeting, a couple of meetings coming up in July and again in August. We target, we're targeting finalizing this by August 21st, um, and approval by that date. We, uh, B P U, uh, is welcoming comments and suggestions by various stakeholders. Then you have an email address up here, comments submitted to that IRP at B P U dot com. You are also having a, a, a meeting on July 17th where in-person comments from, from stakeholders are, are welcome. Um, all comments are due just because we do, we'll have to wrap, you know, wrap up the evaluation in a, a timely manner. All comments are due by August 7th. And, uh, the, the plan is, is to where feasible and where it makes sense, we do plan on addressing those comments in some way, either in the evaluation or response to, to those stakeholders and hopefully, like, it'll be part of our updates to you all.
Ask a question. Is the board going to see the comments that are submitted?
Yeah. I mean, for you guys to be able to make decisions that we need you to do, you need to know everything that's there.
Thanks.
And Rob, I, I don't know who's all, who's all listening. So for, I guess for the general population, I mean, you can certainly start at any day now that you have the email address and or where to send your comments, starts any comments, questions as of now, and then we'll start gathering that. So if anyone has questions, it's okay to provide them with this. Anyone has questions, it's okay to provide them with this presentation.
What information is I guess publicly available leading up to comments, right? Is any of this proprietary on Black and Beach's end or even on B P U's end? Like, or it's public looking at everything we're looking at and offering comments on that whole picture?
So.
You know, inputs, assumptions, all, all that will go into this.
Okay, uh, I guess let's, let's see what comes from questions, but you know, the presentation tonight is available. If you have Zoom, if you've, if you've accessed this meeting, it'd be on our website. And, uh, I mean, we'll try to respond as quickly, uh, and collect those questions as quickly as we can and then, and then make sure that we have answers, uh.
But to, to address kind of the confidentiality side of it, uh, that we do have some very specific and sensitive information that's been provided by B P U about the operational characteristics of their power plants that we probably do not want to share.
Well, and I guess what I was getting at is, are we expecting people to make comments just generally what they would like to see moving forward for the utility based on presentation tonight, which, you know, is publicly available? Are there other things that we're expecting people to?
I would ask the public to stay tuned and then, then their questions will probably get formulated over a series of meetings that we have. So I'm, I'm not sure how much tonight's presentation would drive public thought or comments, you know, but certainly the next meeting and the meeting, meeting after.
Yeah. So you might see comments after this presentation about scope in general and wanting to look at different scenarios. I've seen that before and having comments about particular assumptions around some of your power plants might come up your way. Um, but generally speaking, there might be more comments since they start seeing some results. Um, because then they're going to have stronger opinions.
Makes sense.
Well, I guess two questions. One, when is this IRP? When do we have to file this with WAPA? When's it due?
It, it's, it's due in 2024. Um, it was.
December 31st?
It was supposed to be in July of 2024, but there is no deadline that, um, restricts us from a date. So if we had to push it out a month, we could push it out a month. That, that would not impact our WAPA agreement. But.
And I know that this is, because I know you all have been working on this for a very long time. This is a very condensed timeframe for the board as far, I, I guess from my perspective. And this is a lot of information. These are very important decisions that have to be made. Um, so I guess. I guess I just throw that out there now.
One final question, hopefully this is an easy one. I wrote it down at the beginning and didn't get back to it. But I saw the last one, the last IRP we did was 15 years. This one's 20. Is there a reason for the differing timeline there?
Not necessarily. Uh, the, the previous one was done in-house with a load forecast and generation that expected to meet all those requirements in-house. Uh, we had just invested the, the money into the nearmen facility, uh, just a few years before that. Uh, and so therefore the visibility that we had at that point is different than the visibility we have today. Um, the changes that we're seeing today are, are vastly greater than the changes that we anticipated in 2019. Um, and so therefore we wanted to take a broader look at how, what the future held because again, we are in need of capacity additions in, in one way, shape or form going forward and therefore all capacity addition, generally speaking, are long-term in nature. And therefore we want to make sure that we capture that long-term visibility in a better format. So.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Um, so this is a, a bit of, uh, uh, a foreshadowing of the things that are to come. Um, so we're at the, the board meeting today, June 18th. Even the, the introductory side slides is June 20th, is not June 20th. Uh, but coming up July 3rd, we're hoping to provide supplementary information around specifically the base case. Um, and some just general status updates. Uh, and if anything's changed from a timeline or the next steps perspective, we would provide it then. We'd also start providing, uh, information around the written comments and any responses that B P U might want to provide in that forum or any adjustments we may make to the analysis based on those comments. Um, July 17th is intended to be a regular session where comments from the public are welcome. We will be providing just a general summary associated with the IRP up to that point with, with comments, uh, anticipated at that time. August 7th is where we would review all of the results of the IRP evaluation. So working through the entire four-phase process along with potentially some proposed action plans that may be driven by the outcome of that analysis. Uh, we'll also be wrapping up kind of comments associated, uh, you know, that's where the comments from the publics would be wrapped up and, uh, allowing us time to incorporate that with any sort of uh, within the final documentation. Uh, and then lastly, uh, looking for board approval on August 1st.
That's all the slides we have for this evening. Um, are there any other, uh, questions or comments? Like to put to us? Any additional comments?
Staff or? That's everything.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Most time.
And we've even left you 15 minutes.
All right.
A few other things to discuss.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Dom, you want to go back to the board?
We can do that or do we want to?
There was a email that you'd sent out with R F P. Either way, I suppose. The board, your part or your board comment, you were going to during, during your comments, were you going to? Uh, I was going to do it in the comments, but if you want to do it, no, that's fine. We, we go with, okay. With Mary, do you have some word comments that you heard?
No, I, no, I, I'm just ready to address that whenever we do. The R F P issue we're going to address in there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But you said that you, if, if we had time, you might, you had.
Something to share for maybe.
Oh, I thought you meant on that. Uh, yeah. Um, I'll make it real short and so you guys can have a little bit of break. I, I spent my entire focus on community engagement. So all the breakout sessions that I went to had to do with that so that I can hopefully do a better job in that area and meet again. Um, and I, I feel like I got a lot of helpful ideas and I also have a stack of cards. I don't think I brought them with me of people that I can touch base with for, for different ideas and, um, the opening or the big general sessions to me were excellent this time. The, the very beginning one was the sort of political forecast, what will happen if X, what will happen if Y? And, um, then there were two excellent presentations, one on A I and one was the economic, um, forecast. And they were for the whole Jennifer session and they were both very good. And I thought they were outstanding because they were both given by females. So. Um, it was, it was overall to me a really good conference, but, um, when our community engagement group gets together, I'll, I'll share some of the more specific things. I've already mentioned one to Rose when I ran into her off-site. So, yeah.
She didn't mention the food. Great. Then we had a chance to go out to eat together with other.
To Nascar people.
To Nascar people, they pay for a meal. We got a chance to talk about some, some things that were happening with various other organizations, a lot of questions that we had in-house. I see some, some of the things that we're dealing with, we're dealing with the same things that we talked about five weeks.
Exactly.
Our customer service, all this stuff. Then they talk about a survey that they have available through A P P A that we could use, uh, as well. So it was really good. Uh, and then when I talked about mirroring contrasting our utility with others, uh, the, uh, one of the guys at Build who sent me a whole spreadsheet from A P P A of the various utilities, life towers, the rest of the board, other than Brett knows them too. Okay, good. No, really. Good. So we don't, just maybe call his name. vendor, vendor. Stephen, very good.
He came in and did some in-house training.
Yes, he said that. Yeah, he said that. Yeah. He was one of the instructors and, uh, riding by. They got a chance to get space with him.
Yeah, I just, on the A I thing, she had, um, on the screen, her presentation, like her opening remarks, which was not her. Her A I thing. And I'm not sure I came away knowing anything more about A I. But she was amazing to listen to and a very fascinating, um, presenter.
She didn't graduate college.
Or high school.
Or high school. And she said, and since she was hired by one of the, you know, uh, top organizations, technological programs, technological organizations in, in the country. And so she did an excellent job.
Yeah, she was very, I could.
She was.
Yeah, I could have listened to her for another hour. She was really interesting.
Or you were listening to somebody that sounded like her. Yeah.
I was glad that they had. Latina, female African-American presenter, you know, uh, and then the rest of them were white male, you know, we're, you know, pretty much used to dating, but it was really good to see them have those presenting. Then at the end, Sugar Ray Leonard, you guys missed that. I have, I, I taped the whole presentation.
I was so sorry.
Oh, no, yeah, I got it for you. It was great.
Yeah, I was just saying how I've gone to the A P P A for quite a few years off and on. And it did look a lot different than when I started going. And it was very good changes in my opinion. I was really happy to see those women presenters on the general thing. So it was good. And it was good information. The, the man that did the political forecast kind of, he was, he never said Trump's name nor Biden's name. He never said their name.
Really good. He's really good.
He just did an excellent job.
And so I had to ask him about, you know, the forecast for the future and he shined light on, uh, that. Again, without using the names, we talked about, you know, where they stood. He said, you know, this is where we can look, look, look like there is the going forward. So he did a really good job.
He did a good job. All the presenters were amazing. The, the technology and some of the groups that I, there were like poll questions that you could do in advance and that had a little glitch in the community engagement section. It, they never worked. So we just did show of hands thing, but um, it wasn't a big mishap.
One thing you can take away from the A I is that, that don't start without, uh, because what, what A I can do is, uh, I'm sure it could tell you that, that, uh, if you don't train it in, in the beginning, you could have all of your trade secrets, you know, given away, you know, uh, if you, uh, begin without putting those, uh, safeguards in place. So that was really good.
It wasn't as scary as I imagined, you know.
She made it very simple. It's, it's a powerful tool for everybody utilities and, and a lot of other. We're at the infancy stage right now still. Just think about social media as it was rolled out. I mean, there's a good that comes with it. There's a bad that comes with it. And like Tom just said, and we talked about that this morning was to record your voice, get your, you know, take a snapshot of your image. And it could put you in some video speaking and it won't be Tom, it'll be a saying everything that you probably wouldn't say.
I'm glad I'm no longer teaching.
Right.
That would be hard to a lot in the field of education, I think.
Other news, certainly all the net, some of the networks are talking about how that may play into this, these upcoming elections and, and how Trump or Biden may be projected differently. Use of AI and just cautious.
Well, if there's nothing else, we want to entertain a motion to adjourn. So we have a couple of minutes before the next meeting.
I'm adjourned.
This is Rose I second.
Okay, move and seconded to adjourn. Roll call please.
Roll call, Gonzalez. Groneman. Haley. Waits. Well, Vinnie Henry.
Bye.
Parker. That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.